Further provides that where an action or event is proposed at the commercial dock, the planning board may impose additional conditions as may be necessary to protect two classes of people.
It is 6:30. Okay. I want to thank you.
Recording in progress.
Are we on? Okay. I want to thank everyone for showing up at the public hearing of Colaruso's dock. Can I get a motion to open a public hearing of Colaruso's dock today is May 6th, the year is 2025?
I can make a motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so is the applicant here?
Yep. Applicant.
Okay, we're going to have the applicant to present first.
Before, before we get started, I got to do some housekeeping rules. This is a public hearing. Sign up sheets are in the back on the table. If you wish to speak, sign up and we'll collect the papers and read off your name when it's your turn. During the public hearing, the applicant will present, after which the planning board members will voice their concerns, comments, and ask questions. Finally, the public will be called upon to comment, voice their concerns, and ask questions pertaining to the presented application. When called upon by the chair or other presiding officers, the public called upon to speak will be asked to state their name, street number, or name where they currently reside. The time to be allotted is three minutes for each speaker. Once all people wishing to speak have spoken once, and if time allows, persons wishing to speak a second time may be called upon to speak for a maximum of two minutes. Public comments are expected to be made on the agenda items and during the prospective time allotted. No member of the public may address the planning board during a meeting or public hearing unless recognized by the chair or another presiding officer. All individuals speaking are expected to demonstrate respect and courtesy and will receive the same in return. The use of profane language, slanderous or personal remarks, and disruptive behavior such as booing or clapping is strictly prohibited. Anyone called upon to speak by the chair or presiding officer must direct their comments to the planning board rather than the audience members, avoiding debates. The public is requested to refrain from discussing non-agenda items during planning board meetings and public hearings. Board members are not obligated to respond to public comments or questions. Members of the public should keep their statements concise and relevant, avoiding personal attacks, insults, and arguments. Failure to comply with these guidelines may result in the violator being asked to leave the meeting and vacate the premises, potentially with assistance from law enforcement if necessary. The meeting may be adjourned without further recourse. Secondly, emergency exits over here to my left, out the front door, through this door here, straight on out to the street. Apologize for not enough chairs. This is what we were given to set up. That's all that happened.
That's good. Thank you. Now we have the applicant. State your name.
Good evening, board. My name is TJ Ruwain. I am an attorney at White Menosferman &amp; Hannah, and I represent the applicant on this matter, A Colaruso &amp; Son, Inc., in connection with its application to this planning board for a conditional use permit for a repair performed nine years ago on a bulkhead of its waterfront property located at 175 South Street in the city of Hudson. We are here tonight because the city planning board has called an additional public hearing on this application. Since 2014, Colaruso has owned and operated a commercial dock on the city's mixed-use waterfront. Under the city code, Colaruso is permitted to use the commercial dock for the transport and shipment of goods and raw materials. The city code also provides that such use is subject to conditions concerning emissions of dust, smoke, gas, air pollution, discharge and dispersal of liquid or solid wastes of any amount, noise, hours of operation, engine idling, lighting, visual impacts, protection of wetlands, protection of water quality, and erosion control. Since Colaruso purchased the commercial dock 11 years ago, it has been in compliance with each of these requirements. The city code further provides that where an action or event is proposed at the commercial dock, the planning board may impose additional conditions as may be necessary to protect two classes of people. The first, residents living in close proximity to the dock, and the second, the public while recreating or using public facilities adjacent to the dock. In late 2016, as a result of erosion on the dock's northern edge, Colaruso completed an erosion control project that involved the replacement of a 75-foot section of bulkhead. We have pictures for any members of the public that want to see. I know the planning board has been to the site to see what the bulkhead looked like. I see pictures what it looked like before and now what it looks like today. The repair was completed in 2016 in compliance with state and federal permits. The repair did not allow for any expansion of operations or activities on the dock. It also did not occur on an area of the dock where operations occur. Rather, the repair stabilized the northern shoreline of the dock to stop and prevent further erosion into the Hudson River. The repaired bulkhead is also safer for users of the site as well as kayakers using the side berth next to the dock property. In January of 2017, after Colaruso completed the repair, the City of Hudson Code Enforcement Officer notified Colaruso by issuing an order to remedy that the repair constituted an action or event that triggered planning board review under the City of Hudson Code. In 2017, based on the CEO's determination, Colaruso submitted a conditional use permit application to the planning board. In June of 2017, the planning board accepted the application as complete and scheduled a public hearing. Since that time, the public hearing has been open and closed. For the past seven and a half years since the close of the public hearing, we have expressed our position that the repair is not subject to SECRA and requested that the planning board move ahead with its determination on our conditional use permit application. In July of last year, the New York State Supreme Court supported our position and held and confirmed that the repair is a type-two action and thus not subject to SECRA review. Colaruso's dock operations are authorized to continue per the terms of the city code and as a constitutional right. It is also clear that when a triggering event occurs such as the repair, the city code authorizes the planning board to review that triggering event to determine whether that triggering event requires additional conditions to protect residents and the recreating public. The city code does not authorize the city planning board to review and impose conditions on the commercial dock operations as a whole that are not related to the repair. Thus, the planning board's current scope of review is limited to determining whether there are any additional conditions, those that are in addition to the ones we are already subject to, that are necessary in light of the repair to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents living in close proximity to commercial docks and the public while recreating using public facilities adjacent to the commercial dock. With respect to the first class of people, residents in close proximity, there are no residents in close proximity to the dock. The closest residential structure is across a commercial railroad track and over 900 feet away from the closest boundary of the dock property. With respect to the recreating public, the repair was undertaken for that exact purpose, to protect the recreating public on the Hudson River and on the north end of the dock. Based on the foregoing, we are unable to discern any further conditions that are necessary to protect the recreating public. That's it.
Does any of the members have any questions for the applicant? Not at this moment. Okay, can we exit right first? Can you just start with the sign in sheet? Okay, I'm going to, um, good evening, everyone. I'm going to start calling names and forgive me if I accidentally blotch the names. I'll do the best I can, so just kindly correct me if I make a mistake with your names. It's not intentional. The first person is Tassilo Van Harseval? Harseval? Am I saying that somewhat correctly? Please tell me, how do you say your name? Tassilo?
Yeah, hello, my name is Tassilo. Most people know me as Max. I live in Greenport, so for full disclosure, I have a, generally, if you live in Greenport, you have a pretty good relationship with Colaruso. I live in a walking distance to the quarry. And I was talking earlier with Ben Fain and asked him, so what do you want? And he explained to me, they are a little concerned that maybe at some point in the future, not by Colaruso but by someone else, the dock might be used for purposes that maybe wouldn't be advantageous for Hudson, like storing garbage, ash, and all these types of things. And it seems to me that a reasonable condition to place on this would be to prevent these types of uses that Colaruso wouldn't be doing anyway, because I believe that Colaruso has been using the dock in a pretty responsible way. And if you look at the LWRP and the legal basis of it, the waterfront act, New York State clearly wants the waterfront to be used for some purposes other than purely recreational. So the use of the dock as it stands right now, I believe, is a very useful use for Hudson, certainly for Greenport. Colaruso is a pretty big employer in Greenport, and I certainly hope that that stays this way. And lacking any better plans for the waterfront, I see no reason why this particular use shouldn't continue in the way it has been now for years. Thank you.
The next person is Margaret Morris.
I'm not sure that this is on, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, can everyone hear me? Because it's kind of difficult in the back. Margaret Morris, First Ward resident, First Ward council member. I will be very brief here this evening. Basically, if the goal here is to have a shared waterfront, then the conditional use permit must provide the other businesses and users of the waterfront the opportunity to use their spaces without impediment. Others this evening will speak to specific uses and developments on the waterfront, and there have been many in the years that have been going on since 2017, on the financial, social, and environmental benefits those developments bring to the city and its residents. The planning board should consider, at a minimum, conditions relating to the following: hours of operation, days of operation, dust control in the dock area, lighting, and most importantly, restrictions on what materials can be loaded at the dock. All of these elements will have, if not addressed appropriately, the potential for a significant negative impact on the other users of the waterfront and of the, on the citizens of Hudson. So I urge you to consider this, and I thank you for scheduling this hearing and for listening to what we have to say on this subject. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Alex Madero.
I'm a resident here in Hudson and a candidate for county supervisor on the First Ward. Thank you for the chance to speak tonight, and I really appreciate you allowing the public hearing to continue. I speak for a lot of groups that are concerned about the future of our waterfront, but I want to say at the outset that we are not here tonight to ask you to shut down Colaruso's dock operations. That is not why we're here. We do feel that they should not go forward without strong conditions that ensure compliance with the existing city zoning code and the waterfront development plans. Tonight, our group will be making comments that address concerns regarding Colaruso's proposed dock operation and intensified truck traffic, and attorney William Demarest will present conditions that we feel are critical. Applying conditions again is not a vote against Colaruso. Our sincere desire is to see all the waterfront businesses succeed and operate in harmony. We also feel that other core riverfront businesses should be afforded the same level of consideration that has historically been shown to Colaruso by the board. Some of them were operating at the waterfront before Colaruso started operations of the dock and all deserve respect. It's worth noting that zoning code language for the waterfront is very straightforward, stating the planning board may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards to the maximum extent possible, and requires that the proposed use be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district and not detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties. Given the scope and complexity of this application and the 30-plus city zoning code ordinances involved, we believe that the public input should be welcomed throughout the board's review. It would be a major disservice to Hudson's residents and visitors who enjoy the waterfront and the growing businesses and cultural enterprises if public input were constrained by closing the hearing before the full review is completed. We'd also like to make an offer to new members of the board who may not be fully up to speed on proposed dock operations. Most of, many of the people speaking tonight would welcome the opportunity to meet with any of you, to answer questions and share the data and history. Although there have been previous hearings regarding Colaruso's applications, the last relevant one to the dock operation concluded nearly five years ago. Since then, the board has seen significant turnover. Only the current chair was involved partway through. None of the current council were on the board at the time. The public can serve as a very valuable source of historical context and continuity, as many of us have followed this issue closely for years, so please keep the public hearing open. We want to help the board succeed in this responsibility for the benefit of Hudson, its waterfront, and generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person is Ben Fun.
Can you put me down a list a little bit? Just let me work on something.
I don't know, Ben.
I'm sorry.
Okay, the next person would be Ron Boyle. Am I saying that right? It looks like a B-O-Y-L-E.
Ron Vogel.
Oh, well, at first I thought it was a D, but then I thought it was a Y. I'm sorry.
That's pretty close, though. At least you didn't say Bogle.
No, I wasn't going to say that. I apologize.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to, oh, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight.
If you want the public to see that name, you can put it right up. Yeah, it's got to be up a little bit higher. Well, we saw it. You can submit it to us. Yeah, so maybe the public will want to see that. You can put it right up. Catch your name? Yes, right here. Right here. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Ron Vogel. I'm at 31 Allen Street. First, I want to start by thanking you for your service to the community and your stewardship. The topic we're dealing with tonight is not a routine matter. It's complicated, it's important, and the decisions that you make will shape the future of Hudson for many years to come. The challenge, I think, is to find a path forward that allows Hudson's businesses to coexist without letting any one business operate at the expense of others, other businesses, neighborhoods, or public safety, and to do so while ensuring that all businesses follow city zoning laws and the planning for Hudson's future that's already been embraced. My comments are going to focus on meat and potatoes issues, and that's going to be economic development. Since Basilica Hudson opened in 1910 and the Antique Warehouse 10 years before that, and by the way, it's worth noting that was prior to Colaruso being on the riverside, other businesses have followed, ushering in a wave of cultural, hospitality, entertainment, and service-oriented energy. These businesses are doing more than enriching our community life. They are also creating real measurable economic impact. They provide good local jobs, they contribute significantly to the city's tax base, they invest in property and infrastructure, they attract other businesses, and most importantly, they bring in visitors who spend money in our restaurants, shops, hotels, theater, galleries. That spending ripples throughout the community, supporting employees, landlords, tradespeople, and public services. In short, the benefits of this revitalization are felt citywide. And just to put a finer point on it, in 2023, the Hudson Valley tourism generated over $5 billion in visitor spending. Those dollars multiplied and contributed significantly to the region's economic growth and stability, and it's produced over $600 million in state and local taxes. Visitation in our region now surpasses pre-pandemic numbers. Hudson is already struggling with revenue challenges, and Hudson should be doing everything in its power to attract the economic activities from our region. This is not a time to take actions that would discourage or undermine opportunities to attract the kinds of businesses that strengthen our city's economic future. Our appeal to the planning board is to reinforce what we already know works by applying common-sense measures that respect both our past and our future, measures that allow a longstanding business to continue. May I have 10 seconds to finish?
So we ask everyone to critique their presentation to three minutes.
All right, I'll end it with this saying, let's make sure that our economy is aimed in the future. Thank you all very much.
And you can come back up at the end if you want to. Then you're still not ready?
No, I'm ready.
Then the next person would be Ivy Dane.
Hi.
Ivy Dane.
Ivy Dane. Hi, good evening. On the coattails of much of what Ron just said.
Excuse me, Ivy, could you please say where you're located and all of that?
Yes, my name is Ivy Dane. I am a resident of Lower Union Street and a Warren Street business owner. This issue affects me both personally and financially. My interests are split between quality of life concerns, living so close to the Hudson waterfront, as well as protecting my small business just up the street. Limits must be enforced. We're all privy to previous generous approvals concerning the hall road and its impact, concerning, and it has been scrutinized over and over again. There's no need to reiterate them. I'm going to try to keep it brief. I know I have three minutes. My plea comes as a concerned citizen aiming to protect Hudson's jewel of a waterfront to locals and visitors alike. If no enforceable limits are enacted, we risk not only losing a place we rely on for recreation, but also it presents health risks, the pollution, noise, et cetera, as well as safety issues with not having a proper, safe railroad crossing for pedestrians. As a Hudson small business owner, my interests are also economically focused, ironically aligned with Colaruso. Hudson is a tourist destination, like it or not. Having such industrial activity on our waterfront and the Amtrak station is far from inviting or welcoming. Gravel being loaded onto barges over and over isn't a peaceful setting, either from a boat on the river or from the park for someone who's craving quiet. Hudson is unique, and aside from simply a city escape, many visitors come to shop at our sustainably sourced stores and our world-class restaurants. Environmentally unfriendly activity at the waterfront where many people first land off the train creates a horrible first impression for a city that continues to build hotels and relies on blocking taxes. We rely on many of them for our livelihoods. I believe our residents and local small business owners' interests are much broader collectively versus a huge company. Our priorities are to nurture our community in general and its local economy. We provide jobs, we boost sales tax revenue, we work hard to create a destination for which locals are proud to be a part of, and visitors will leave feeling impressed. Thank you very much for your consideration and for listening.
Thank you. The next person, I do believe I'm reading this right, is Sienna Reed. Am I correct? Am I correct?
Correct. Hello, my name is Sienna Reed. I live in Hudson on Columbia Street. I'm a small business owner and I pay Hudson City taxes. Colaruso is a great company that serves a vital purpose in our community.
Bring the microphone down so we can hear you.
This one?
Yeah.
Colaruso is a great company that serves a vital purpose in our community. Paul Colaruso, the owner of Greenport-based mining company, is quoted in an article from the Times Union, August 19, 2021, as saying, quote, "If we can get our trucks out of the city, we have less potential of something terrible happening. That was the motivation for this whole thing at the very, very beginning, to get our trucks out of the city so we're not exposed to any kind of liabilities that could happen. God forbid, a little kid chases a ball in front of a truck," unquote. This led to the application for granting of Colaruso's permit to build the hall road leading to the dock in the city of Hudson. There was no serious study of the impact that the rerouting of trucks into the south end of Hudson would, or the proposed massive increase of trucks affect the businesses in the city of Hudson, the lower downtown area. If Colaruso, Inc. is allowed to do what they're currently proposing, tens of thousands of enormous dump trucks will now be coming into Hudson's downtown waterfront district from their hall road onto two small but important Hudson City streets, Front Street and Broad Street. Front Street leads to many downtown businesses, including Basilica Hudson, an important venue for events, the Warehouse Hudson at 99 South Third Street, which homes over 40 local businesses, the Antique Mall, 40,000-square-foot business that is the largest antique bender on the East Coast. They're directly across from, alongside the road. Broad Street connects to Front Street and crosses the Amtrak line. It leads to Hudson's only waterfront parks, Henry Hudson Riverfront Park, Rix Point Park, the Public Boat Launch, Hudson Ferry Company, the Hudson Sloop Club, Apollonia, Hudson Powerboat Association, Historic Dunn Warehouse, now under major development plans, which were based on public input. The waterfront park hosts festivals, children boating activities, ferries, green space for relaxing. It is the city of Hudson's only contact point with the amazing natural asset of the Hudson River. The residents in Hudson have been shown in all studies to desire by at least 80% better and more access to the waterfront for recreation and contact with nature. Colaruso's plans to increase their operations will make that impossible. Both streets have foot traffic by adults and children. The confluence of the number of trucks Colaruso is proposing with pedestrian, vehicular, and train traffic must be analyzed in order to prevent the kind of disaster that Paul Colaruso himself was worried about. We don't want to expose our city to disaster or liabilities. Colaruso's current permits were based on 2015-2016 numbers that they gave to the state of New York, the DOT, the city of Hudson, regarding the number of trucks that would be operating across the beautiful and environmentally important South Bay Marsh and into Hudson. Greenport based their decision about environmental impact based on those numbers of trucks that the impact would be small. The dump trucks have been shown to have nearly tripled between 2015 and 2020. We don't know what numbers are today. Did you say times up? Thank you. I'll continue later.
Okay, the next person is Amy. I'm going to see the last name because I'm not the first. Amy?
Yeah.
L? It looks like L-H-I-S?
No, that was a mistake.
She said that was a mistake.
Oh, it was a mistake, okay. Donna?
Donna Streits.
Hello, I have a handout. So this is a copy of the letter that you emailed in to the planning board today, and then this is one of the attachments. There's enough to hand to me out.
Yeah, but Donna, please submit these electronic.
Oh, I did. I did.
They will be ready. That way it ensures that every member gets it.
So this is what you have there?
Yes, today we kind of saw that today. We'll look at it again probably after the meeting, but I saw something like that today.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Donna Streits. I represent our Hudson waterfront, and I'm a resident of the First Ward. I live on Union Street. I echo Alex's comments that we're not looking to stop the dock operation. We want meaningful, comprehensive conditions applied to the dock permit. My focus today is truck volume. For three years, Colaruso refused to provide truck data to the planning board, only requesting a study by Creighton Manning in 2020 at the board's insistence for data. That study revealed that truck volume almost tripled from 2015 to 2019, and levels were substantially higher than Colaruso disclosed to government agencies in permit applications. The study also showed that days hauled per year were far fewer than the 365 days they could have hauled, only 77 days in 2015 and 133 days in 2019. The hall road permit limits recommended by Colaruso and approved by the planning board were up to 284 trips a day, up to 250 operating days a year. In other words, no hauling on weekends and major holidays. Without an annual safeguard cap, these limits would enable the dock owner, Colaruso or a new owner, to run up to 71,000 trips per year, or 13 times the 2015 volume. were up to 284 trips a day, up to 250 operating days a year. In other words, no hauling on weekends and major holidays. Without an annual safeguard cap, these limits would enable the dock owner, Colaruso, or a new owner, to run up to 71,000 trips per year, or 13 times the 2015 volume. If no limits are required, the worst-case potential is over 103,000 trips a year. The city's zoning laws clearly prohibit intensification of non-conforming industrial uses. An expansion beyond the dock's 2011 levels directly contradicts the letter and spirit of those regulations, unless a variance is approved by the zoning board of appeals. This is not a judgment on the company's reputation or its past contributions. Rather, it's about how industrial operations can exist responsibly within a city that values its waterfront, its residents, and its future. To protect against a sky's-the-limit number of trucks traveling to and from the dock each year and related barge activity, it's critical that a strict annual trip limit be implemented, along with any daily or annual, daily operational daycaps, to safeguard against unchecked industrial traffic, which would be disastrous to our waterfront and pose tremendous threats to public safety, to other waterfront businesses, to the city's waterfront development plans, not to mention our beloved Hudson Athens Lighthouse. We also recommend, for public safety and other reasons, requiring that the applicant obtain updated permits from the New York State D.C., the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer, and New York State DOT, based on actual and proposed truck volumes. My letter to the planning board provides much greater detail. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions as you deliberate in your review.
The next person is Mary.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a mistake.
Melissa, where's the next?
Hi there. Thank you for having this public hearing. I'm Melissa Oftemauer, First Ward resident and business owner, co-founder of Basilica Hudson and River House Project. We're the direct neighbors to the dock and the hall road. Do you want to? Am I being timed? Am I talking? Should I talk?
Wait.
Yep. Spread them out?
Okay, that's what it is. We're gonna start over. Can we do this? Okay, thank you.
There are going to be so many that it doesn't make any difference. You won't be able to line them all up.
Should we put it on in front of that so they keep slow? As I said, we're direct neighbors to the hall road and the dock. Obviously, thank you for volunteer service. Not a small ask. I've been at these meetings for over 15 years, and I recognize the rotating cast and appreciate you all. This is a make-or-break moment for the future of Hudson's waterfront, one that will impact our city for years to come, and we ask that you use all the tools available to you under the law to ensure the waterfront remains a welcoming, shared space for people, and not one dominated by intensified truck traffic and heavy industrial use. Our family lives, works, and raises our daughter in the First Ward overlooking the Hudson waterfront and the hall road. This proposed expansion of industrial activity will directly impact our daily lives professionally and personally. We are concerned about our health and safety, the air we breathe, the dust we inhale, the noise we hear, the sightlines we've already seen change. Our building is regularly covered with dust from the trucks and the aggregate of the dock, something we did not experience in the early years when bought the building in 2010. The increase of truck traffic has already made our lives harder, and this is before any formal expansion. This year marks our 15-year anniversary, and our family business Basilica Hudson, this weekend welcomes a Mother's Day farm and flea market, which brings thousands of people to the waterfront to support local makers and celebrate our regional community and economy. Each year we host more than 100 events, bringing over 25,000 people to the Hudson waterfront, and by extension to our city's small businesses and downtown economy. The ripple effect in positive activity is undeniable, but so is this threat. Unrestricted industrial growth risks blocking Hudson's potential and harming everyone who lives, works, and finds joy near the waterfront and the city. We're not alone. Many other beloved organizations and businesses will be here today. They call the waterfront their home, and together we advocate for the waterfront that serves all people and contributes good jobs, tax revenue, culture, and joy for all. The fear we have is we can't coexist with unlimited trucks and industrial traffic. Unchecked growth in truck volume and dock activity would compromise everything our community has built. There are a couple of critical safeguards we ask you to consider. Limit truck traffic, which will still be, 100 trips a day is already more than before the code violation happened seven years ago. That's a proposed number. Plant trees as neutral, as natural dust barriers, and beautify the area. Install sidewalks and lighting to ensure pedestrian safety. Place limits on hours. Consider access to the water, the South Bay. Consider a lower crossing south of the dock. Keep people's safety and recreational activities at the center of your planning and decision-making. Please, we really value our waterfront, and we want us to all coexist in harmony. Thank you.
Maybe I'll do, this one's for you guys. This is Cole, so you guys, I know, we'll turn around for the, after I get it. Ready? All right. Thank you to the volunteer planning board tonight. Really appreciate all the time you guys put into this. I'm here to ask the planning board to take meaningful steps. All right, by the way, I'm Tony Stone, live on the First Ward. Been there for over 18 years. I'm here to ask the planning board to make meaningful steps to control the dust coming from the dock operations. As co-owner, the adjacent property Basilica Hudson and a First Ward resident have experienced this issue firsthand. The dust is not only a constant nuisance and a serious health implications for our community. Stone dust contains fine particles that, with continued exposure, can lead to both acute and long-term respiratory problems. I know this all too well. My 13-year-old daughter, born on Allen Street, has chronic asthma and has been hospitalized many times. I'm not here to ask you to shut down operations at the dock, but I am here to remind you of your obligation under the city of Hudson's zoning code. Your responsibility is to protect public health and safety and welfare, and to prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards when approving permits. That's not optional. Failing to do so puts the city at legal risk and puts our residents at physical risk. The dock sits next to one of Hudson's most treasured public assets, as you know, our waterfront and park. This is a place used by residents of all ages, especially children. That makes it all the more important to take action. While there are many potential safeguards, I'll highlight just three critical conditions we believe must be included in any approval of the conditional use permit. Limit truck volume to 100 trips per day from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Colaruso rarely exceeds this now, so this would simply codify existing practice established in 2013, and help keep the dust and diesel emissions in check. This volume is also more than sufficient for a profitable export operation. Create a 50-foot tree buffer along the entire eastern edge of the dock property. This would be a forested area, not just a few shrubs, with a diverse mix of deciduous and evergreen trees. This natural barrier will help trap dust and improve the air quality. The land is not currently used by the applicant, and planting could be done in consultation with the Columbia Land Conservancy and the Hudson Conservation Advisory Council. Three, restrict the dock to export of crushed stone only. If the applicant wants to export new material, especially one with finer particulates like limestone, they must return to the planning board for review and approval. Different materials require different controls, and you must retain oversight. These are not unreasonable requests. They're fair, forward-looking, and essential. These decisions you make tonight and the coming weeks will shape Hudson's waterfront for decades to come. Future generations will live with the outcome of this process. And while Colaruso is currently a responsible local company that listens to the community, that may not always be the case. Ownership could change, and a multinational corporation could take over. The safeguards you put in place now to protect Hudson for any scenario, not just the best-case one. So, I ask you to follow the code, make your decision that prioritizes the public health and long-term balance of the waterfront. Do not forget, you have the authority and the responsibility to make this work in harmony for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person is Marion. And it looks like, last name with an N?
That's a mistake. A lot of mistakes. We thought that you said to sign in, because my name's on there too.
This is the next list.
Is there another one out there? Then you need to let me know when you're ready too.
Okay, we got this, so I don't forget.
Okay. I got it online.
I want to start by saying thank you for your public service. My name is Clark Weeman. I have lived in Hudson for 12 years and had the privilege and honor of serving on the planning board with a front row seat to this application for the first six years. I have a professional background in urban planning, property manager, and construction manager for over 35 years. Since the beginning, this project has created conflict in Hudson for residents who would be negatively impacted by the proposed 284 trucks per day on the applicant's hall road. My public comments here today maybe have been unorthodox, but include a solution that I believe would mitigate many of these impacts by bypassing the area of greatest impact. My, let me just there. Hudson's waterfront is undergoing major change. My predecessor, speaking articulated that incredibly well. There's tens of millions of dollars of business enterprises at stake. My predecessor's also talked about the code. I'll remind everybody that conditional use permits are contingent on the projects being in harmony with appropriate and orderly development of the district, and will not be detrimental to the orderly development of adjacent properties. We could ask professional experts on whether these criterias are met, or we could ask the orderly developers themselves who are here tonight. This proposal includes moving the dock approximately 150 yards south while connecting the hall road to that new location. This includes a new railroad crossing and would require closing the existing crossing. Ferry Street Bridge, soon to reopen, would provide waterfront access to the public, as would a new crossing for emergency purposes, including Colaruso trucks. A pedestrian overpass at the existing site could be built as well to provide pedestrian access. It's clear from my diagram that the red indicates the current hall road location, and the green indicates the proposed new location. It essentially includes moving the dock 150 yards to the south, creating a new access point, and rebuilding the dock, providing direct access to the waterfront, as opposed to the circuitous route bypassing or passing by Basilica, Kitty's, the Dunn Warehouse, with a proposal to be redeveloped. It's clear that the new dock would avoid the major enterprises that I just explained, Amtrak, Basilica, et cetera. This proposal would remove the major source of negative impacts of truck traffic, noise and dust 150 yards to the south. The upside to local enterprises and to the recording public would be huge, and this would lift the sense of animosity and conflict among all parties involved. Thank you for your time.
Yves Jacques. Yves.
Thanks, Alex. Great pronunciation. All right, thanks. Yves Jacques, Third Ward, 910 Columbia Street. I work for UNICEF, where I lead a data science team that helps deliver lifesaving programs for children in some of the world's most challenging environments. And among many things, we actually run projects that monitor air quality around schools. So, tonight I'm speaking not just as a resident, but as someone who works professionally to protect children's health. And so, I see clearly what's at stake here on our waterfront. Hudson's only meaningful public space on the riverfront, a place where children play, where families come together, is directly adjacent to the gravel dock. Now, the city of Hudson has also secured state funding for a waterfront park, right, including a natural play area, youth education space near the Dunn Warehouse. Those plans are meant to expand safe, inclusive space for our kids. But if Colaruso's operations move forward without strong conditions, those child-centered investments will be rendered meaningless. The proposed youth area will sit directly across from Slip 1 and Slip 2, within full exposure to gravel dumping, truck exhaust, and diesel emissions. Now, we know what that means, right? The science is clear. This is not fake news or alternative facts, all right? Fine particulate matter enters lungs and bloodstream. Children are especially vulnerable. They breathe faster. Their lungs are still developing. Exposure increases risk of asthma, cognitive impairment, long-term respiratory damage. These aren't abstract risks, okay? This is happening in towns like ours all across the country. So, what do we have so far with respect to this proposal from Colaruso? No independent impact studies, no air quality baseline, no health assessment, no enforceable monitoring or mitigation plan. And yet, we're being asked to grant a permit that will cement an industrial foothold on our public waterfront. If this board approves a permit like this, you have to, at a minimum, require independent environmental and health impact assessment. It's got to be tied to acceptable trip levels and other mitigation measures. There has to be a robust, continuous monitoring plan. There have to be public reporting and enforceable penalties, including, if need be, revocation of the conditional use permit. And that's going to be paid for by the business owner, not by us residents. Anything else is going to shift private risk onto public health. That's our kids' health. That's our health. Let me be clear. The burden of proof is with Colaruso. It's not with our children. And I want to end with a direct appeal to all of you. You were appointed by the mayor, Kamal Johnson, right? People, to serve the people of Hudson, not an outside company. Colaruso has shown no regard for our health, our public investment, or our vision for the waterfront. They're basically prepared to turn this into an industrial sacrifice zone. And you have the authority, you've also got the obligation, to stop that. I ask you to deny this permit until these basic conditions are met. Thank you.
Yes, I'm a resident of Hudson. I live in the First Ward. And I'm a founder and artistic director for the Hudson Festival Orchestra, which gives an annual concert for full orchestra on the waterfront. And it's a joyous occasion. I'm very concerned that if the planning board does not do what it can to limit the activity of Colaruso truck traffic on the waterfront, hundreds of people, businesses, area venues, public spaces, Amtrak passengers, will be negatively impacted by pollution of all kinds. Noise, emissions, dust. It's not fair to let one company have such a negative impact on all of us. Thank you.
The next person looks like Erin Hindley.
Erin?
Is it Erin?
What's Erin?
Do they say I don't speak, or they just say their president?
Well, they should know. I mean, it's close enough. It looks like an Erin. E-R-I-N, or Erin? Or Eric? Erin Hindley. I'm going to go to the next person then.
Ben's ready.
Ben, are you, you ready? Yay, Ben!
Hi, sorry. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. I'm Ben Fain. I'm the owner of Kitty's Caboose, Grapefruit, The Wick, and what's happening, the redevelopment of the CAS, the CAS property. I want to agree with the first speaker. This is not about Colaruso. It's obviously a great company, a lot of hard-working people. We all depend on it. It's not about that. It's about the impacts that will happen at the waterfront. We pay $357,000 in taxes to Hudson. Colaruso pays $57,000 in property taxes to Hudson. We are tethered to the waterfront. What, if the waterfront thrives, we thrive. The planning board has broad authority to put many, many, many conditions above what's in the zoning code to, onto the dock. One thing to talk about is the weekends. Without current, without additional conditions, the dock will be able to run from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. seven days a week, 365 days a year. Noise, the noise will be at 85 decibels from what we understand, seven days a week, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. That's bulldozers, excavators, next to the park. Lastly, garbage, hazardous waste. Without significant conditions, it sounds like solid waste, construction debris, which is asbestos, lead paint, can be delivered and transported from the dock. This is catastrophic for Hudson. It's also, there's, so it, it has significant impacts on us. We are planning to build a residential neighborhood on the old CAS site, which is right across the street. So what we are asking for, desperate for, is limiting the, what was agreed to for the hall road to 250 days a year. Don't, don't work on, on holidays, five days a week, no hazardous materials, one barge at a time, using their slip already, and obviously 284 trips a day maximum. I fell in love with the waterfront. I know everybody else here has as well. These are very, very, very minimal, minimal, reasonable conditions. I'm begging you, please, please, do what you can. Thank you.
The next person is Mary, Mary Vaughn Williams.
Hi, I'm Mary Vaughn Williams. I'm a resident of Lower Allen Street, lived in Hudson for 20 years. And I'm a member of the Hudson Business Coalition. So I'm here to urge the planning board to define enforceable limits on Colaruso's current application for truck and barge operations at the Hudson waterfront. The data clearly speaks for itself. Between 2015 and 2019, truck traffic associated with the dock nearly tripled. This dramatic increase has already impacted our community's roads, environment, and quality of life. Colaruso's operations are legally constrained by both the LWRP and zoning code unless granted special exceptions like a zoning variance. The potential economic impact of unregulated industrial expansion at the Colaruso dock is significant and far-reaching. Hudson's waterfront is a vital asset for our local economy, supporting not only businesses, but tourism, festivals, and events that draw visitors from near and far. Unchecked industrial traffic would disrupt these activities, deterring visitors and diminishing the quality of life for residents and business owners alike. We urge the planning board to protect Hudson's future by implementing clear enforceable limits on industrial operations to preserve the vitality of our community and waterfront. Thank you.
Next person, Daniel Rothbart.
My wife says this is a mistake, but it's not. Jim Denny, D-E-N-N-E-Y. I live in the First Ward. And we've lived here, my wife and I bought our house in 2017. We love living in Hudson. It's a very special place. I'm from Oregon, the most beautiful state in the country, but this is not too bad. And I also grew up in a family that works in extractive industries, loggers, four generations. And all of those operations, like this operation, has to obey rules. How the rules affect all of us, all the environment. I support fully the idea of this business needs to continue, but with the restrictions that have been brought forward by the people. Operating hours, dust abatement, screening to make the, the site as attractive as it possibly can and help keep the dust down. And so, that in mind, I thank you very much for allowing me to speak, give my opinion. And I really, really hope that you can come to a decision that will serve all of Hudson. I can't tell you how many visitors we have come up from the city, people from the West Coast come and visit us, and they all think this is a beautiful place. And I'd like it to continue that way and to be improved. Okay? Thank you very much.
Next person, Caitlin Robinson.
Good evening, board members and fellow neighbors. I'm Caitlin Robinson, a First Ward homeowner on Lower Union overlooking Colaruso's operations. I want to address three critical concerns tonight. One, visual impact. Industrial operations diminish our waterfront's natural beauty. Two, the environmental burden that many have spoken about, daily noise and dust affecting our neighborhood's quality of life. And number three, existing solutions that have been previously ignored. Tall trees screening, 25-foot height limits, and dark sky compliant lighting. Every day I witness the gap between what is and could be. From South Front Street to our Amtrak station and our public parks, we see industrial operations that contradict the improvements we've invested in together. Let me be clear, I think industry has a clear place in our economy, but prosperity doesn't have to come at the expense of community well-being. Our solutions are straightforward. Natural barriers with tall trees, a reasonable 25-foot height restriction on material storage, and dark sky compliant motion-activated lighting systems. Our city zoning code already requires development to be in harmony with appropriate and orderly development of the district. This isn't just regulatory language. I believe it's our community's promise to itself. I also encourage a path forward that includes all voices, business owners, our Hudson waterfront, and citizens with a stake in our shared future. Given the prosperity these dock operations generate, these accommodations aren't just reasonable, they're necessary for the community we're building together, where industry and neighborhood complement rather than compete with one another. That's the waterfront we deserve, and that's why I'm advocating for your support on these issues. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
We can, we can take a three-minute adjournment? If anyone else needs a break? Yes. We are back, we're back in session, and the next person to speak, if she would like to, is Susan Higgins.
Hi, my name is Susan Higgins. Thank you for allowing the community to speak. I live on Union Street between Second and Third. And I wanted to provide you with just the perspective, we've been here 11 years, of someone who has felt directly the impact of dust on our street. When we, we have a lovely old house that has old wavy glass and leaky and wavy storm windows that were period to the, to the home. The home is, remains to be period. It's just really lovely. And we wanted to leave it that way. When we first moved here, we, we really felt that the air was clean and everything felt really wonderful. I have people in my family with asthma and with a heart condition. All of a sudden, we noticed in our bedroom, we wake up in the morning, and there was a film of white dust on the bedroom dresser, on the pictures hanging in the room, on all the objects in the room. So we dusted it, we were trying to figure this out, and it happened, kept unrepeatedly happened, and then we realized, oh my heavens, this is cement. And we, obviously, breathing cement is deadly. It's really a very bad thing. You don't want that in your lungs. So we had to replace all the windows on the front of our house. And it was heartbreaking to me because I really wanted to keep those beautiful windows. It was very expensive, and we had to get very good, strong air purifiers to put in the house to keep that dust down. It was very disturbing to me. I also noticed it on the plants in front of the house. Now, we're between Second and Third on Union. We're not really on the waterfront. But that's from the trucks in the town. The, it, it's really, the, the ideas that people have been expressing are, in my opinion, brilliant and very useful ways to solve this problem for a happy conclusion that allows us to, to really live well in this city. I also wanted to mention that I have a, a daughter-in-law who's a birder, and she always goes down to the waterfront whenever she comes, and she always follows these bald eagles that nest on our shore. As you may know, we have very rich bird life on, on the waterfront here. And air pollution, noise, and water pollution are deadly to birds. They don't want to nest, their nest, the shells on their eggs are very thin, the, the, the nestlings are weaker, all because of these factors in the air. So I think that you really need to take a look at what the impact of increasing the, the amount of dust that goes in the air and the amount of noise and fumes that are in the air, what that impact will be on the very rich wildlife that we have on the shore, especially the birds. Thank you.
Nicole, you're up next.
Oh, thank you. Hi, I'm Nicole Vidor. I live on Allen Street, Lower Allen, and I've lived there now for 23 years. I don't look it though, but anyway. I'm here to speak with you about noise. And, and also, I think to everyone here, particularly people from Colaruso, this isn't like us against you. This isn't like, oh, you're bad and we're good. It's about just what everybody's been saying about harmony and consideration and living together and, and just basic human consideration. And that, I'm here for noise. And I think this particular photograph is a really great example because you'll see there that if you're going from the Basilica, or you're coming down from Kitty's, or you're coming from the warehouse, and you want to go to the river with your children and your dog. I saw it the other day. I saw a woman standing there with two children, a pushchair and a dog, and she was sandwiched between two big trucks behind her, two big trucks on the other side, and a train coming. Nowhere to hide, nothing to protect them from all of that. And I think it's really important that we consider all of this and that, that we work together. We don't have to be against each other. I know that everyone in Colaruso, they care about their children and their parents and everyone, and they don't want them breathing bad stuff, and they don't want them to be overrun by noise and all of that. So I think we're all here in this community. There are many businesses, not just Colaruso. And I think we could work together, and I wish we could work in a round table instead of something like this. I wish we could have dialogue with each other. And I really think that we could create something that is for all of Hudson and not just for this thing against you, against me. And I really hope, and I thank you all for all the time you've given to this, and I really hope that you really consider the people that live in Hudson, and you really consider what's being asked of you, to really genuinely look at the quality of the air, of the noise, of the traffic, and take that into your heart and the people that you represent. And I really hope we can all work together. Thank you.
Next, Joseph Hayes, please. The next person is Caitlin.
Yes, it's already been submitted. It's the community engagement report. Okay. Hi, everyone, I'm Caitlin Bayada. I'm a Hudson resident in the Fourth Ward on Washington Street and a member of the Dunn Warehouse Development Team. Last year, we entered a long-term lease with the city of Hudson and have been working to reimagine the waterfront as a vibrant place for recreation, culture, and connection to nature, with Dunn Warehouse as a, serving as a welcoming community hub. It's our mission to adapt the defunct building into flexible spaces for a range of activities, amplifying local educational, cultural, and waterfront-focused orgs and small businesses. The $5 million development plan includes an event space for flexible community programming, like workshops, youth programs, and performances, and three commercial spaces in the north section, which includes a quick and affordable food option and outdoor seating. Outdoor amenities such as gardens and a municipal pool are on a separate development track. Our approach supports the vision for a healthy and recreational core waterfront district outlined in the Hudson's 2011 LWRP. It's also in alignment with the DEC-funded climate adaptive design of the Henry Hudson Riverfront Park by Assembly General Bella. This plan includes a new pedestrian bridge at Slip 2, a natural play area, a living shoreline, an environmental education area for sloop club, and Slip 1 water access point, and a sunset, sunset lookout and fishing pier at Rick's Point. As you're proudly aware, Dunn sits directly across from the top of Slip 2 from Colaruso's dock operation. Increased industrial activity will have negative environmental health, recreational, safety, and economic impacts. Increase in truck volume, dust, noise, or odor is not compatible with the proposed vision that we have developed in partnership with the city and local residents over the past two years through extensive community engagement. Last summer, we spent countless hours at the waterfront, talking to people and observing how it's being currently used. We talked to people from diverse backgrounds and life experiences. We met with community leaders, hosted community workshops, tabled at waterfront Wednesdays and Bliss Towers, sponsored the Community Joy Day Festival, and conducted a 210 participant community survey. This information is publicly available in the community engagement report we issued last August, which is now available on the planning board's website and which is in your hands. What we heard was that people loved the waterfront because of green space, the calming waters, watching or participating in boating and fishing, and its many festivals and gatherings. People loved its peaceful and quiet atmosphere and that it's free and accessible to all. When asked what people don't like about the waterfront, an overwhelming majority mentioned how Colaruso's dock operation spoils their enjoyment of the waterfront. Some said, "The constant gravel truck travel creates noise and dust. Colaruso's truck noise and air pollution is destroying the calm and beauty of the place." And another said, "Glad to see Dunn restored regardless of what goes in there. Unfortunately, with the gravel dump and truck route there, the whole waterfront is compromised." I strongly encourage you to honor your authority and professional obligations as a planning board, to consider the feedback from these Hudson residents. Their testimonials, like those of the people here today, should be essential information in your, in your review of the CUP, which should apply to the entire dock operation, not just the improvements to the bulkhead. Comprehensive enforceable conditions must be stipulated by the planning board. I'm not against Colaruso's operations. I'm asking for balance, safety, and protections, for us to listen to each other and to be good neighbors, like Nicole said, to protect the future of Hudson's most loved natural asset now and for years to come.
Sean Rowland.
My name is Sean Rowland. I'm a resident of Hudson. I live in the Fourth Ward, and I'm a lifelong resident of Columbia County and have been coming to Hudson all my life and have been living here full-time for 13 years. I wanted to sort of recognize that as a lifelong resident of Columbia County, I've seen gravel and cement operations and proposals come and go. Some are approved and some are denied, like just outright denied. I'm thinking of Snake Mountain, which was in East Nassau, which was a huge gravel operation, which outright was just denied. St. Lawrence Cement Plant here, about a decade ago, I believe, there was a massive cement plant proposed and a huge, you know, public engagement, and ultimately, the decision was to deny that permit. to deny that permit. It never happened. And you know why it didn't happen? It's because it wasn't compatible with the urban fabric of Hudson. It wasn't compatible with the LWRP. It wasn't compatible with the vision of the residents and of the city government. And so it didn't happen. So I really want to, I recognize everyone's point of view that, yes, collaborating is important and recognizing the need for local businesses to be able to operate and also local residents to live here. But sometimes, proposals come before the planning board and, you know, it's a planning board, it isn't an approval board. So I want to kind of provide that counterbalance and reminder that sometimes things might come up and they really just shouldn't be approved in their current format. And it really isn't the obligation of the public to solve the issues that are represented in a denial, right? That's the responsibility of the applicant to then go away and, you know, come up with a plan and really listen to and address the concerns that the very valid concerns that residents have brought and come back with a new plan. Like, that's how it works. And I want to just remind everyone that that is a possibility and sort of state it so that also members of the planning board, you hear that, you know, or I guess, think about that, that that is a viable outcome that could also happen. I'm not saying that's exactly what I think should happen, but I haven't heard anyone say that and I just want us to remember that that happens all the time and it's okay when it does. Thank you so much for your service.
Now Caitlin Frank, it is now your turn.
Well, you've heard my name a couple of times now, Caitlin's. I am a First Ward resident and this is an economic and health concern for me. I live right on Cross Street. I can see Colorado right from my living room window. And, you know, I've lived in the city for a long time as well and I understand that there are some things that are going to be not great for my health, some that I'm willing to deal with, but like some of the other residents have said, like, I do wake up and there is a lot of dust on lots of my furniture. And I think it's interesting that, you know, Colorado's lawyer did say that really no one is technically being impacted because they are far enough away. And I think we're hearing that that is really just not the case. Like, people are being directly impacted health-wise. I have animals and I, you know, I don't have any children, but I do worry about my animals. So I guess I would just implore you guys to think about our health really genuinely. And again, I want to reiterate that this isn't a case of saying Colorado shouldn't be doing what they're doing. It's it's really concerning that they could just have no limits and that that's really frightening as a person who can genuinely just see what they're doing on a daily basis as well. So I really thank you guys. I know that this is a really giant decision for you all. So thank you for your time.
William Demarest.
I'm William Demarest with the Law Firm of Rock Falls Graph. Been asked by a number of organizations with members who are residents and business owners here in Hudson to advise them and to assist in the review of this. I've made two submissions prior to this to the board, one in March, in which I laid out the scope of the planning board's authority, including its authority to impose conditions, and recently submitted a number of proposed conditions that we think are reasonable and appropriate to place on any conditional use permit that is approved for this commercial dock. I would like to respectfully disagree with the applicant's counsel regarding both the history of the legal issues and the interpretation of the scope of authority for this board. Back in 2019, the Supreme Court very clearly ruled that Colorado's right to continue to operate as a non-conforming use had terminated. That was the terminology that the court used because of that repair work. It triggered the termination of the petitioner's right to continue to operate the commercial dock without conditional use permit. So they require a conditional use permit to operate. It's not limited to just the repair. In 2024, the court made that very clear in saying this is a type-two action under SEAKER, but very clearly ruled that the board is now authorized to impose certain conditions as specified in the code and went on to quote zoning code section 325, 17.1D1, which gives this board very broad authority and requires it actually to impose conditions to help protect the health, safety, and welfare of residents. And while two classes are specified in that provision, the public park, the public highways located in and adjacent to Colorado's commercial dock are certainly fall within the area of necessary protections. And so we encourage the board to impose conditions for those protections. The letter I submitted recently starts out with general conditions to keep the conditional use approval narrow. The point is that the assumptions, conclusions that have been drawn about the current operations, the planned operations, the board will act and make an approval and its determination will be based upon those conclusions about that use. And so it shouldn't provide an approval that allows them to change that use. Truck routes, materials, traffic volumes, new construction on site, changes in the on-site activity, retail activities should be prohibited unless they come back, get new approvals. The board should make sure that they, at the very least, impose conditions that are consistent with the haul road approval. We've also set forth a number of others, conditions for dust, noise, lighting, screening, landscaping. We think these are all reasonable conditions. They're enforceable and they are certainly within your authority and we ask you to impose those conditions. Thank you.
The next person is Ken Dow.
I just want to ask, I have something I want to report here. Has everybody heard the audio of William Sharp, the New York State Department of State Attorney, describing the effect of this law at the time it was enacted? And I'm going to play a few seconds of it.
It's going to come into the other three.
Okay, that's fine. I'll only play a few seconds. I'm Ken Dow. I was the city attorney when this whole action began back in 2017. When Colorado sued the planning board, I was the attorney who defended the planning board. I did all the litigation and won a complete victory and the entire dismissal of all of their claims at the time. I am deeply and intimately familiar with the law and the facts and the history of this case. I've never argued for an outcome, but I have consistently shown up to ensure that the planning board and the city and the code were upheld, that the authority that is vested in you is is made available to you and you are not deprived of that by some of the misrepresentations that the applicant has made. The first one Mr. Demarest just referred to, it's frankly outrageous to claim that this is just about the bulkhead work. It is extremely clear that the bulkhead work was a trigger that caused and required a complete review of the entire operation and that a conditional use permit is required in order for the operation to continue in any capacity. And again, I'm not arguing against it, but it is important, crucial to understand that that is in fact what is the scope of your authority. So I'm going to play, this is, at the time this law was enacted in 2011, when the zoning code was put in place, this provision, there was an attorney from the New York State Department of State who was involved in drafting the law and advising the common council on exactly what it meant.
It would be at the point where something happens on the property where the paving of the road or the road needs to be regraded. If that's regraded, they're going to have to get a conditional use permit for the entire property.
That's the key seconds. It's quite a bit longer, but I wanted you, everyone, to hear that. This is what the city council enacted, that if any modification, rating the road, they talked about a culvert, they talked about any modification to the parcel, they were going to have to get a conditional use permit for the entire operation. That is what the city council enacted and that is the law that you are working with. For them to suggest otherwise is completely misleading and gaslighting. So, and this has been reiterated by the courts on both cases, as Mr. Demarest referred to, in the case that I litigated, as he said, the right to, 20 seconds, the right to operate was ended. I also want to stress one other thing. I may come back at the end, that the conditional use permit that they are applying for is often shorthanded to a docker operation. That is not what the permitted conditional use that they're applying for is. The language, this is directly out of the code, continuation of existing commercial docker operations for the transport and shipment of goods and raw materials, including loading and unloading facilities and storage of such goods, once last sentence, such goods and raw materials and associated private roads and providing ingress and egress to or from such commercial dock operations as such uses existed on the effective date of this local law in 2011. It is not an open-ended. I will come back at the end.
The next person is Roddy, it looks like Nizer.
Nizer. Hey, how's everybody doing? I've been a Hudson resident up to like 60 years ago and then I moved out. I still own a house in Hudson, State Street, and I moved out to Kenner Hook. My wife lives in Kenner Hook, so that means I live in Kenner Hook now. But anyways, I've been coming to these and listening and, you know, everybody's talking. I try to listen to both sides and it's wonderful to hear the Hudson people actually saying that they're okay with the docks, but they want the stipulations, which I understand too. But nowadays, the trucks that are running back and forth, they're brand-new trucks. Colorado has new trucks that, the diesels nowadays, they got to put this diff in and actually it's a cleaner fuel. So they have done a lot for the trucks to, so it's a lot cleaner. So, and if anybody's been out towards Colorado's quarries, they keep the road clean, they keep the dust down. If there's any dust, they send a water truck out, they send a sweeper out. So I'm sure they'll do that down there. So I see both sides, they both have to coexist. So hopefully, everybody can get along. All right, thank you.
I don't want people to think I'm leaving, I'm just backing up. I'm very sensitive to air conditioning, blowing cameras. Now, it looks like the next person that I'm seeing is Madeline Nienen.
Oh, I really agree with my friend.
Okay. How about Abigail?
No.
No? Okay. So then Adam. Where's my Adam? Adam, are you next?
I'm here. Hi.
All right, Adam.
Hello, good evening. We're neighbors. My name is Adam Weinert. I am a resident of the First Ward. I'm also the executive director of the Hudson Sloop Club and thank you so much for creating this opportunity to speak. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Hudson River Coalition to respectfully urge the planning board to include clear enforceable conditions if it approves Colorado and Sons' conditional use permit. This isn't about opposing the project, it's about making sure operations at the waterfront move forward in a way that protects public health, the environment, and access to the people who live here. Hudson's own planning documents, like the local waterfront revitalization program and comprehensive plan, lay out a strong vision, a waterfront that's active and working and also safe, healthy, and welcoming to the public. We're recommending eight common sense conditions that reflect that shared vision. Limiting truck traffic to weekday business hours only with exceptions requiring advance notice, prohibiting hazardous or refused material transport without prior approval, preventing any expansion of bulk handling or processing beyond what's already permitted, guaranteeing public ownership and access of the 4.4 acres of waterfront land, preserving public access to the haul road during evenings, weekends, and holidays, planting trees along the eastern edge to create a natural dust buffer, paving the loading area to reduce airborne dust from operations, and replacing undersized culverts to restore tidal flow to South Bay in partnership with local conservation groups. These eight points are outlined in more detail in a letter we sent earlier today. I also have copies here if anyone would like to see them. These aren't new ideas. In cities like Brooklyn, Portland, Baltimore, and San Francisco, working waterfronts are shared successfully between industry and the public using managed access, visual buffers, trail easements, and collaborative planning. Hudson can and should do the same. We also believe Colorado should be recognized and supported for any efforts it takes to meet these goals. That includes connecting the company to grant opportunities, fast-tracking sustainable project approvals, and celebrating community-minded progress. This is our chance to balance the needs of a local business with the long-term interests of the public. We hope you'll include these conditions in any permit approval to keep Hudson's waterfront working, welcoming, and sustainable for generations to come. Thank you. I'm Adam Weinert and this was from the Hudson Riverfront Coalition, including the Hudson Sloop Club, the Hudson Ferry Company, and Schooner Apollonia.
And the next person, back up again, but we can't. And that would be the last person, I see no one else on the list after Ken. Not missing another sign, I'm sure that I did not say.
Two minutes left.
Can I add my name for us? Comment.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wanted to go back on the list real quickly and I'm sorry and...
I haven't started yet.
[laughter] [laughter]
submitted twice to the planning board. I did them all in 2019 and then I resubmitted them because most of you were... So just to reiterate, the earlier decision in 2017 stated, "Planning board rationally concluded that the erosion repair project was one of the actions or events specified in Section D, triggering the termination of petitioner's right to continue to operate the commercial dock without a conditional use permit." The more recent case in 2024, Judge Rivera said, "The conditional use permit requirement of the code was triggered and the board is now authorized to impose certain conditions specified in the code, along with additional conditions on such continued use of the dock." They said, "The conditional use permit is, contrary to Colorado's characterization, not simply a permit retroactively to authorize the repairs already made, but rather a permit for continued use of the dock with such conditions as the board may impose." So everybody has said the same thing. It is the whole, the whole property, the whole operation that is subject to the special use permit without, they can't continue. The other thing I want to return to is the definition of the, this is what was adopted by the city council. Again, I read that it is the conditional use permit that is one of the conditional use permits that may be done in this district. Again, it's not continued dock operations, I'm not going to read it all, but the last word is continued, continued existing dock operations as such uses existed on the effective date of this local law in 2011. You have to have what the baseline is. You don't, it's the city council who determines what conditional uses are permitted and they put them in the code. It's up to the planning board to figure out if they comply with those. They've already said what the operation can be. You need to know what the baseline was in 2000. You need to know what the baseline was in 2011, you can't arbitrarily create a new conditional use permit, and because it specifies it to 2011, you need to do background information to have a baseline because anything else would be purely arbitrary. So I know this is coming, you know, this has been to the board six years ago, it should have been done, but it needs to be done. You need to know the baseline because that's the standard you're comparing it to, and that's what this special use permit can be, can encompass. Thank you.
Okay, so Sean, you have two different handwritings, I had to make sure it was you again.
I just wanted to ask, Sean Rowland...
Sorry, I just wanted to submit these papers.
So, no, can I just put in parentheses your name or your...
Sean Rowland, R-O-L-A-N-D. I'd just like to ask for the public hearing to be continued.
Okay, then the next person is the Anna Reed, thank you again.
Sienna Reed, Hudson resident. Hudson's waterfront is an invaluable, are you, wait, are you not starting? You can let me know when to start.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
When should I start? Pardon? Okay, thank you, I'm starting.
Can you hold the microphone extremely far?
Sorry. Hudson's waterfront is an invaluable asset. Dozens of businesses already exist there and business owners have poured millions of dollars into their current business investments. Renovating and saving abandoned structures, have plans for major projects that will benefit the public. They're making our city more beautiful, livable, and increasing work opportunities for Hudson locals. No other company is putting such a brutal impact on the environment and surrounding businesses as Colaruso, that's a fact. It took years for the city of Hudson to acquire real data about their operations, but the city has not taken appropriate steps to use that data, once it was gathered, to analyze the impact of their operations, to determine whether they fit in with city codes and plans for waterfront revitalization. Their operations have even cut off our city from its own property. Why would our city allow one company to stifle the potential of our city? The amount of public response over the years has been vastly against the operations down at the waterfront within the city limits of Hudson. Current decisions by the planning board will greatly influence the opportunity that Hudson has to revitalize its waterfront. I urge the board to give this issue the gravity it deserves. Please do not make any decisions without a major review of Hudson city codes in conjunction with Colaruso's operations and our residents' desires for a greener city with waterfront initiatives that will make us more connected to nature. Thank you.
William Demarest?
Thank you, I appreciate you giving people an opportunity to continue the comments. And as I was saying, we submitted 29 proposed conditions that cover a variety of different areas and are broken out by the concerns you've heard from various members of the community this evening. I wanted to just mention a few of them for the board that might be a little bit more complex. You know, some of them are very obvious, dust control, Colaruso certainly is very familiar with that, it's included in every mining permit, things like covering materials and watering. But when it comes to noise control with the heavy machinery on site, probably going to require for safety purposes backup alarms and things like that, we would ask that a condition be imposed that requires them to source out the least noisy that will get by with the state and federal requirements for that type of a use, just to help minimize the noise coming from that type of equipment. We also urge the board to impose landscaping requirements. We think they could do that, you could require a landscaping plan to be submitted prior to the approval, but certainly at the least requiring a landscaping plan be submitted as a condition of the approval for subsequent approval by this board, and we would urge include the Hudson Conservation Advisory Council in that process. And then also conditions to help support public access to the park and other areas, including, we would urge that a sidewalk, the potential for a sidewalk to be put in on Broad Street and Front Street to help keep pedestrians and trucks away from each other, to evaluate that as a condition, and potentially require Colaruso to work with the city to have that put in. So, those are just some of the more substantive conditions, and thank you again.
Melissa?
I'm back more in the position of a vulnerable mother and business owner that who has really hated being in a war with my neighbors. It really upset me, affected my health in many ways, not just the dust. And in all this sort of idea of working together and not hating your neighbor, I do want to speak. We are in a nation divided. I really have higher hopes for Columbia County and for Hudson and for Colaruso to hopefully be inspired, the whole company and the owners and the families, to actually like us, want to do like we do on Flag Day. We host the fireworks, it's literally my favorite day in Hudson, and Colaruso supports that, and we work together on that one day. And I am hoping that this opening and this final frontier, and inspired by possibly the board who could ask the applicant to bring goodwill to their neighbors and to the city of Hudson, which we already know, what we have at risk is a lot more than what they have. They're a very established company, I'm happy you guys have existed for 100 years without our waterfront. We really have our waterfront as a communal need for many things, and I just want to believe that the goodwill can come because we are open to receiving great ideas and more fireworks. Seriously, if we could just...
Better for the Eagles, except for the Eagles.
Oh, no.
Yeah, just at the end here, thank you guys for extended time. Just want to say, a lot of ideas have been presented today. We guys really need time to get this right, I really hope you leave the public hearing open, so more ideas can come forward as you guys discuss this. And I do want to say, we're coming here as a compromise, as Sean had said, you guys could deny this. There's a lot being put on the board to decide these things, a lot on the public to decide these things. You guys can say no if you feel so, but with that, we are putting a very good effort to find a compromise, and I hope the applicant also is, I hope the applicant is very aware of that, and I just want to empower you guys to remember that, so, thank you.
And Tony was the last person on the list. There doesn't seem to be anyone else that signed up, but is there anyone else going once? Going twice? Done.
Wait, no, wait, we need a motion, we're going to make a choice. Is it closed the hearing tonight? You can leave it open?
Wait, wait, guys, wait.
You can, you can close it and leave open your public hearing for written comments, so that someone could be...
Sorry, five, please, five.
Okay, thank you. So, did you hear Victoria?
So the board, and your new member also arrived, I don't know if the public saw but...
Did you have a new member?
Sorry for turning away from you. The options are, make a motion to close the hearing, make a motion to continue the hearing to a specific date and time, or you can close the hearing and leave it open for written comments for seven days or 14 days to allow people that maybe didn't finish their thoughts or have something else to say to submit written comments to the board.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion, as Victoria said, and I want the public to know we have received every comment. Today, we received a lot of comments, and they will all be posted. If the comment is not posted, please send me an email and let me know that your comment was not posted. And every member of the planning board gets a copy of your letter. It automatically goes out with our new portal. It's not, you don't have, you do not have to mail it to all of us, it goes to the secretary, which is Linda. Linda puts it in the portal, and the portal sends it to each and every one of us. Okay? Does anyone in plan will have anything to say?
Yeah, I'd like to leave, make a motion to leave it open.
Okay, here's the, here's the motions we have on the board. We can leave the physical public hearing open where we're going to have this set in again, that's one.
If you leave it open, it needs to be to a specific date and time.
Right.
So we would have to pick another date for the hearing.
Right. Or we can close the physical public hearing, meaning we won't have this type of session, and leave comments open for another week, two weeks, or whatever we decide tonight. And we just continuously get comments, we don't make a decision until all the comments have been, you know, because everybody here that came had said that something, everybody.
But I feel like a lot of comments have been made, a lot of suggestions have been made, and maybe the applicant wants to come back to speak to some of those.
But they can do that by writing. You know, it's up to the board. They can, but I would rather hear them.
Yeah, I'd rather hear them. I'd rather hear their response to what's being said, so that's my motion.
Can you make a, okay, so let's make a motion.
Wait, wait, everybody that suggests to me.
They want to hear Colaruso's response to some of these presentations tonight. Is that necessary for a public hearing, or can they just go ahead and do it at a regular meeting?
Colaruso is the applicant, so they can respond whether or not the public hearing is open or closed.
It has nothing to do with the public hearing.
They have an obligation to provide written writing.
But we're just saying...
Typically, we would wait till it's closed so that we can respond to all the comments at once.
Right. We're, tonight, our decision is just about either keeping it open, have another session like this with people coming up to speak, or closing this type of public hearing and leaving the comments, let me finish, let me, let me finish. Or close this type of public hearing and then leave the session for them to submit more letters of their comments, because everyone that came tonight submitted a letter, we have tons of them on our portal, stuff for, yeah, we do, and when I say tons, I mean tons. I'm not saying it's not important, what I'm saying is that we are reading your letters, and I want to know from the board, so I'm going to put a motion on the table, and the motion is, we're going to have two motions, either we're going to close the public hearing tonight, but leave a period of time for more letters to come in from the public, not from the applicant. We close this public hearing tonight has nothing to do with the applicant addressing the hearing, because they're going to wait until everything's submitted, and probably we're going to give them something too. Or, we can keep the public hearing open and just continue like this, so.
Keep it open.
Well, I'm not asking, I'm not asking the public, I'm asking the board.
If we're going to leave it open, I would ask that the board consider what date we would like to continue it to, and whether we need to choose another time at the firehouse because it has a larger capacity than City Hall.
I would do it back, well, I would say...
Okay, so what's the motion on the table?
And I would say to our next meeting at the, to our next meeting at...
Your next meeting is next week.
Right, our next meeting.
Oh, that, yeah.
And then the next meeting at the regular meeting after that is going to be in June.
No rush.
I'm not, please, respect the fact that we got to deliver it, please, thank you. So, you know, I want you guys to make this decision, it's going to be a vote from the...
Just make your motion, and then let's see if it passes or not.
Okay. All right. I'm going to place a motion on the table that, I'm going to place two. The first one is that...
One motion, and then there's a vote up or down.
Okay, I'm going to place the first motion on the table. We close the public hearing tonight, but allow time for more comments to come in through email.
Two weeks?
Yeah, 14 days, 14 days, which includes weekends and holidays.
For written comments.
For written comments, as we've been receiving for the last two months, and we will continue to receive.
Okay, so motion by Teresa Joyner. Do you, is there a second?
Jean, second. Okay, I'm going to call a roll call because I don't know if everybody's got it. I'm going to start with you. How about you, Ron? It's okay, you can just pass on it.
I think I should pass.
Okay, good, all right. Jean, you did?
Yes.
Kim?
Yeah.
Now, do you? No?
No.
Okay, so that's two, three.
Well, they have steps and counts as a, as a now.
You should...
Okay, second motion, that we should leave the public hearing open as it is now, and until next month in June. And what date are we going to have it, because we can't have it with our regular meeting, just can't be. Our next meeting is... We're going to have to get the calendar. So I got a calendar. Is the secretary on, can she give us the calendar for June?
Well, here we put it.
It will be June 9th, right, June 10th, right?
It's, our meeting is June 10th.
Yeah, it's next month.
So we would have to pick a different date. I don't know what day this...
So the 17th, 17th? Say we got to look at the city calendar to make a decision on to what date we want to have.
I mean, you could say the 17th.
17th? Uh, no, because that's the, let's say the 3rd. A Tuesday? 17th to 24th? Same thing, 30th. How about the 3rd of June at 6:30, same thing, same place? We have to say 10th, because then we're going to find out if we can have it here.
Well, if you can't have it, we need to have another meeting to reset it, but you can do that next week.
Okay, so how about June 3rd at the firehouse here, if they allow us, at 6:30? Okay, that's fine, I don't see anything on my calendar as of yet. It is a Tuesday, so that's fine. Tentatively put it down there. Okay, I'm going to put that motion on the table. All in favor?
First and second.
Okay, who's going to second it? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I will call it. Randolph?
For June, you know, June 3rd?
June 3rd, 6:30 here, if, if we can get this place, okay? And if not, we're going to have to discuss this again at our regular meeting and be part of other business, okay? Yes, I'm fine with that for the 3rd.
Kelly?
Kaylee?
Kaylee.
No.
You, you're not okay for June 3rd?
No.
No.
Okay, Teresa?
No.
Okay. Yeah.
She passed.
She should vote, she's not...
Okay.
I'm just not sure if I'm up to speed enough to make an informed vote, but if I'm required to, I will.
If you want to, I'm really allowed, but it's procedural, so you don't...
It's a procedural voting, that you're voting, have a meeting on June 3rd, as your calendar will be.
I'm available, aye.
It's still free.
It still fails. Okay, so, it still fails, so let's just, we, let's just be clear. It sounds like the applicant was not going to submit anything new until the public hearing closes, so...
That's correct.
So we can have another public hearing, but I'm not sure you're going to get any new information until the applicant submits something additional for the board to review.
I don't think, we're not planning on submitting anything for the board to review, the board already has our application. The only thing that we would submit in response is that to close the public hearing, like we've done in the past, we would provide sort of a summary response to the main topics that were brought up in the public hearing.
Well, right, I mean, we expect you to respond to the commentary during the public hearing.
But I just wanted to be clear, that's what I was referring to is, but we're not planning on submitting anything else, the board has our application.
Unless we give you something to answer.
Oh, absolutely. But that would be following the closing of the hearing.
That would be closing, in other words, they're not going to submit anything until we give them, you know, we solve their thoughts and all the public hearings and all the things that's been said. that's been said.
So, I mean, the Board's got to figure this out. Someone can amend the motion again.
Tell us can we, either we close the public hearing tonight and allow 14 days for comments to come in, and then we will discuss, deliberate at another meeting where it's not a public hearing, it's just among the Planning Board. That's one motion.
We're not extending it for a month.
Okay, we can extend it for a month because we're not going to come to this again until June.
Okay, what was?
Extend it to June.
We just had that.
The letters.
Oh, oh, you're saying keep the public hearing open for written comments until June 3rd? You could try that. So motion, which I'm saying it correctly, motion to close the oral testimony portion of the public hearing and accept written comments until June 3rd? Keep that again.
Okay, we have a show problem to it.
Because I was paid to need a man for seven.
But we're going to have time, we're going to have to, you know what.
This is the new one to do. The new motion is to.
I don't want to say June 3rd because we're going to have to.
Recording and progress.
Have time to look at the meetings and everything. I mean, look at them. So let's say May 30th, you know, extend it to the end of May, and then we'll have enough time to look at, to give the Board members of time to read the comments that the public is coming in. Closing the public hearing tonight, with this type of public hearing, the third one, and keeping the comments open until the end of May.
I don't think that's what I voted on just now.
No, we're redoing it because we keep failing. Okay, so you can vote yes or no.
Okay, so that's a motion. So you're making that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so anyone second?
Second it. Okay, call a roll call, get them down.
Okay, I'll call, I'll go down. Randall?
No.
Okay, Bettina?
No.
Okay, Kaylee?
Yes.
Gene?
Yes.
Okay. Teresa?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Okay, so the public hearing is, the oral portion of the public hearing is closed, and public comments will be accepted until May 30th because that motion passed.
We got a four vote, we got a four vote to.
To the new person.
She said she voted, for the public hearing to be closed.
I thought she didn't feel that she was able to vote for because she didn't have enough understanding of this situation.
Well, this is understanding of procedures, not of.
That's not what she said.
But that's what.
It's up, we don't have discussion, she voted.
Okay. So the public hearing is closed, and you have until May 30th, the end of, May 30th, to send any more comments in that you would like to send in.
That nobody can hear. Right.
It's a big project. Thanks for rushing it.
This is like the most important thing to happen in this city.
Now we're going to other business because we've got our comments. Thank you all for coming. You invited in. Thank you all for coming.
You know, the board said there's no more information.